Guide us in that direction that we need to go with this. And so you be with Jeff, put your healing hands on him as he gets over his surgery. And so you be with all of those that serve us here locally and throughout the state, throughout the country and throughout the world. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with no team. Justice for all. Justice flag. A pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here.
Camera.
Yeah. All right, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action could be taken on these items at this meeting. The speaker will be limited to three minutes. All right, we'll move on to presentation and discussion of Department head committee and board reports. Any thoughts or questions or comments?
I got squeaky carrot day. But squeaky wheel gets scratched, right?
Yes.
No more discussion there? No discussion on this? Court to consider approval of previous court minutes.
I did have them. I looked at them.
Had one. Hopefully now elections are on, get called.
Make motion for previous court minutes.
Second. All in favor? Court to discuss and consider any recent project scheduling staffing.
Still a statement about there.
Please give a stop sign.
If they would just come to the yard, it would be cheaper to keep them. Because now they could use these things. They're pushing over vehicles and push them back up while you break them off. So.
Okay. Precinct two is going to start policy later next week. Good. Watch how you drop to the hole.
Which one?
I have to get a list. I don't know yet.
If you would give me a list, then we'll put them out there then.
Okay.
Anything else?
We're working hard as we can trying to keep everything.
Thanks for cleaning. Thanks for cleaning up that room.
Oh, you're welcome.
My room was a little messy.
Ah, good. I know it. It's one of those things that you can't help whenever you're trying to get solid out of it. Mud. We had mud clods, pretty big mud clods out there. I haven't got it.
We'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing on an ordinance establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitation and pollution controls of the areas in proximity to Herblay Public Water Supply Wells. And we'll call it 1004 is when we're opening this up. Okay, so this is sanitary control easements within 150 feet of the wells at Herblay Water. We've sent out, there are 11 properties within 150 feet of those four wells there. Sent out letters to all property owners for a second time. So what we're looking at is an exemption from TCEQ for this particular item, the sanitary control easements. If we don't have the sanitary control easements in place, we're in violation. We don't like to be in violation of TCEQ. So when I sent the letters out last year, I got one back. So to, if you've sent them out more than a year ago, you'd have to redo it. So I sent all the letters out. Again, we've received five returned signed. And that's been more than 30 days ago that we sent those out. If we don't have all those letters back, then we need to have an ordinance in place to get the exemption. And that's kind of where that stands. So this would be the first discussion. We have to have a public hearing and then we need to discuss the, or approve the ordinance twice. So we're still in a public hearing. Is there any discussion or any public comment on these wells, the easements? Are there any discussions coming in?
We've been trying to get it done for a while. I spoke to some persons, some people front of Herblay and have anyone that was concerned that I talked to. There may be someone, but they'd be here this morning, I assume. They were in your office. Really concerned about it.
And I did tell them that we were holding this public easement when I sent this letter, our public hearing when I sent these letters. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close that. All right, court to consider an ordinance establishing rules and regulations regarding sanitation and pollution control of the areas in proximity to Herblay Public Water Supply Wells.
Look, we need the ordinance.
Yeah, and the ordinance came from TCEQ.
Okay. All right. Yes, that's my motion.
All in favor?
We'll do this again on six. Court to consider accepting donations to county entities. We have donations to the youth center, $13,960. And I think that's where their.
That was from July of 2021 through August of 2022. She had not, she was not aware that she was supposed to be submitting this. So this is for that entire time. And then the 275 was on the 1850, and then another 275 was from September through October. Part of that was tuition donation and the other is just contribution donation.
Okay. The tuition is what I was trying to think of.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we have senior center donations totaling $1,675.
I'm going to approve the donations to county entities.
Second. All in favor? All right, court to discuss and consider local government assistance for surplus material to repair and maintain county roads under transportation codes 201.706. And our county allotment for fiscal year 2023 is $17,801. And we've typically gotten millings with that.
And as long as it is milling, I make a motion that we accept it.
Okay. Court to discuss and consider installing a speed bump on mobile road in Precinct Two with proper signage.
I am going to let you address this. They're speeding up and down the road. There is a speed limit sign there that's 10 miles an hour. It's been there for years, but they're still going way faster than what they need to be. There's kids out there playing on it and everything. So I'd just like to install somewhat the proper signage that's slowing down. The road's only about 100 yards long, but they can still get pretty good speed coming through there.
Yeah, there's a family that's been asking for those for a long time, several years now.
I certainly have looked into that myself over, and I wanted to do it, especially out here where this chemical plant is. After, I remembered that on a tag website that it had, that actually talked about it. The attorney for the association recommended that didn't happen unless we could get Tech Dot to actually come up with specifications for it because we could be sued since there is no law for that or statute for that. He said rubble strips, they are there. The Tech Dot does have that information on there, specifications for it. Can't be permanent road, and of course your road is way below 45. They cannot be put on the road. That has a speed limit faster than 45 miles per hour. I talked to Tech Dot a couple of weeks ago. Did they have? They said they don't have any jurisdiction on that. We can do whatever we wanted to. I even asked them about the orders, the dimensions or anything they'd have to apply to, and they said no. The only thing they asked was not put them so close that it would run through the intersection. Yeah, and you're right. Tech Dot is not going to give you anything if it's not in their statutes or in their policy. This is what Jim Allison said. But he also said that because there are no specifications, I mean, or what, how do you come up with specifications for it other than? So the county could be sued. So he recommended unless you could get Tech Dot to put specifications in for speed bumps, that you not do it. So I mean, that's a, so you're the commissioner. Have you passed it by Mike at all? Because I was, I was just with him about it some time ago, and he wasn't sure if that would be something that should be done. Well, at first, I said that I had to go through Tech Dot and agree with you, but in our meetings, they don't have any of that. So there's no specifications in there. They just suggested we call Tech Dot and talk to them and I did, so. You might want to talk to Jim Allison since he is the one that actually wrote the opinion on that. I mean, that's, if you want to go ahead and do it today, you're, I assume you'll come up with some kind of specifications. We just don't want to get sued. And he's with who? He's with Texas, with the state association for judges and commissioners.
Okay.
Allison Bass and McGee. And I can send you that email.
Okay.
I didn't know if you'd saw that email or not, sometime back that he wrote about it.
All right, that's good. I remember you wanting to do that.
Yeah.
Something coming up.
The guys out at the chemical plant even talked to attorneys and they decided not to do it because they were going to do it. I said, you know, what the specifications you're going to use? And they decided not to even do run the strips.
I can see that on that road. That is a through road where people are going to speed down there.
I agree.
Typically, I mean, the speed limit's, what is the speed limit there? Is it 30 or is it?
45.
45. Mobile road being such a short road, I can understand.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. I can see it too. I just don't want to come back to bite us at some point. If we're doing it, I mean, because maybe we can get Tech Dot to write specifications. I don't know if we could or not, but that was, if you want to read his opinion, we can do whatever you want.
Or you can contact their office and we can just take no action, just be sure for now, we can move it back home.
Let's do that.
We can also reach out to others who, you know, put the work out. Who has put some in and how did you go about it?
Absolutely. What specification did they use? You can just Google Allison Bass and McGee and it will give you the number. Or you can tell it to call them. Google and it will call them. That's what I did.
No actions. Okay.
Thank you.
Court to discuss and consider lease purchase agreement with John Deere Financial for the Skerrit County Golf Course. So these, when we, in 2021 budget year, look, budget process for 2022, we put the money in the lease payments for these two. The court approved those. They ordered them in October, correct, and are just now getting these motors in. The lease payment is 34,560,76 for four years. So this is one that the court approved. Just looking for approval to sign the contract.
There's nobody that can do their job without its proper equipment. I would make a motion that we allow for the purchase of this equipment that's needed at the Skerrit County Golf Course.
Haven't to a point they've already been purchased since they've been ordered.
I'm sorry?
I said haven't, they already technically been purchased.
Technically, yeah. I mean, we did allow them to, yeah. And then, you know, like I said, it was October when they ordered them last year. Usually they come in pretty quick, but supply chain issues, I guess, I don't know.
So the lease payment is 34,560? Is it in their budget to do that with us? Is it in their budget?
Yes, it's in the lease payments. Do you have a motion?
I made a motion.
All right, two seconds. Okay, all in favor? Court to discuss and consider an increase in Skerrit County Golf Course fees. I have a sheet there that shows you the increases.
51,000?
Yes. Yeah, I was looking for something else.
Oh, okay. While you're looking, I got to say thank you to the people at Golf Course that play out there that, I mean, they've said to me, they need to be increased, and you don't usually hear that from people that are doing anything. And so they really care about the course. They don't mind paying a decent price, and thank you. I'd make a motion that we accept the fees as presented.
Later. All in favor? Court to consider renewal of the service agreement for the statewide automated victim identification checks. Same thing you do every year on this.
Make motion to renew the service agreement for the statewide automated victim identification service.
Second. All in favor? All right, court to discuss and consider going out for RFPs for fiber optic installations to all county buildings. So for about six months now, I've been talking to Optimum. They reached out, which was Suddenlink at the time and is now Optimum. They reached out, you know, they wanted to give us a price on installing fiber to the county facilities. This would be separate from ARPA because ARPA, or the infrastructure, or the broadband, any of those three, because those are for countywide. They don't necessarily consider county facilities in that they consider the infrastructure for broadband throughout the city or the county, not so much just for county facilities. So talking to her, they did give a price, and that price is going to be over $50,000 over a seven-year time period. And because of that, we looked at going, getting RFPs. The reason to go with fiber would be, y'all's offices, uploads are terrible, correct? How long does it take to upload?
Payroll's taking about three hours just to upload to the bank account when it used to be instantaneous. We knew it was going to happen going to the cloud, being that our office was the first of auditors in ours. The county clerk and the district clerk and all of their offices that go to the cloud are just going to make the issue larger.
We go to the cloud in July with all of that. Same for the sheriff's department and the annex. Melody has mentioned that there are, there's a push for voting to be on its own.
Power line.
On power line. That's not law yet, but I could see how they might push that to be law. So going to fiber at this point makes sense. It's that they give, they've given a price for all the facilities. I asked for, I told her just the courthouse, the annex, and the sheriff's department. She did give a price for that, but then she came back with a price for all of it. So considering that it is going to be over $50,000, looking at going up for RFPs or from other entities as well that can provide it, and they are not a sole provider of fiber here in Skerrit County.
Will they maintain and take care of that?
Yes, it would, yes, it would be owned by them. They would maintain it to, and of course you would have a, they would be the internet provider at that point, so that there would be a monthly fee associated with it. And it would replace what we currently have.
And you're talking about all county buildings within the city limits, I assume?
Yes, yes.
So they're not going to go out to our precinct?
Right.
Or anything like that?
Correct.
I, if you can't get your work done, you're just wasting time. I just, I don't see how you can not do it. That's certainly the future, and it's very fast uploads. And it's going to get to a point to where you, you can't do business with all the things going on unless broadband actually shows up and makes a difference with 5G. We still don't know. That's what's sad, which we're talking about a long time, but we don't know.
In all the discussions I've heard on the broadband issue, there's so many aspects to it. You have the wireless, and then you have the fiber, and you have all these other options. Fiber is the, is the top of it.
Maybe.
And they're talking 200 up, 200 down speeds is what.
Wow.
Optimum was.
200 megabytes. And what are you uploading at now? 30?
Slow. Super slow.
Jeremy, what are your thoughts on?
Well, with fiber, it is going to be a lot faster. We've pushed their geese up and down, or at least half gig up. But we will run into issues where backhoes are going to take stuff out, like what happened around Lavelle area, because they don't have their cell service because of a fiber line. That's the biggest issue. I think once broadband, 5G gets perfected, that's going to be the most reliable connection. But until then, yeah, fiber's the way to go.
What about security? Is fiber secure than?
Yeah. It'll be just as secure, certainly more secure than wireless. Fast.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, five, well, probably longer than that. Maybe 10 years ago, I was at a meeting and there were some IT guys there that actually showed us how that you can pull packets out of the air from wireless and take over somebody's computer, get all their information. It's, it was scary of what they showed us then, so what can they do now? You know, they talked about billions of dollars that have been stolen that nobody knows about because they were able to pull that, those packets that are sent out by wireless. They were able to pull it out and intercept the money that was being sent without anybody's knowledge. So more secure?
Yeah.
Definitely.
So what would happen with this if the broadband does show up?
Your broadband money? Or what do you mean?
Well, he said in two.
5G?
Yes. That is the one that would be the best.
How far out are we from getting 5G at this point?
Yeah, I really have no idea. But even still, fiber is going to be reliable for the choice, something that we'll be able to use for the foreseeable future. And once 5G connections are more available, that is something that we could use for other non-protected county facilities, you know?
You can actually Google what cities have 5G, and you can bet they're not here.
Yeah, there's no telling.
And they're a long way away.
Get to us. I mean, fiber's been around for, what, a few years? And we're just now getting to the point where we're going to get 5G to get here. There's no telling when that will happen, if it will.
Well, I know lots of houses have trouble with it. They can't do their job with what they have. We went with two, three different companies that said they would take care of it, but they did not. So I just want to make sure we're not getting into the same company this.
Sure. And with, that's why the RFP's on that because it's such a, such a big thing. It's fiber. I mean, that's something that they would bring to the buildings. And, you know, we can look at it in two different ways. We can ask them for all county buildings and just for the three that we have.
I think it'll hurt to go out for RFPs in the morning.
And I think like they were saying, they're on the cloud now. Once we go to the cloud with the rest of our, it's just going to slow down a much more.
Second.
Yeah, I know.
Hall and Traver. You two may have been working too long together. All right, court to discuss and consider adopting the 2023 Indigent Defense Grant Resolution. We do this one every year as well.
That's just mine. I make a motion that we accept the Indigent Defense Grant.
I think it's up to 30,000 now.
It is, but the reporting forms are much more intensive now because they are now tracking all CPS cases, whether guardianship, non-guardian, non-conservator, all kinds of information, which may be a good sign because they may start reimbursing us for some of that cost because it, we pay a lot in CPS cases and stuff like that for ad items.
One of those good ideas sent down the county's paper, for the most part.
Well, I would motion for about 2023 Indigent Defense Grant Resolution.
Second. All in favor? Court to canvass returns from the election held on November 8 of 2022.
I'm amazed at how many people share that.
Yeah.
Wow.
It wasn't record breaking. We've had more, but it was up there. Actually, in the last gubernatorial was.
Really?
It was.
I've forgotten.
I think there were, let's see, we ended up with 2,400 early voting, and that's about what we've had in the 2020, or 20, no, 2018 government.
Okay.
Yeah. It was pretty close to the same.
Oh, same guy ran it.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
But it was a good turnout. 44.52% total turnout.
That's not bad. Then two propositions passed.
Yes. Proposition passed.
That's good. Do you have any motion or anything else? Go ahead. Oh, sorry. I second your. All right, court to discuss and consider data backup agreement.
They don't have a vote.
Let's vote on that. All in favor? I'm just ready to move on. Yeah, throw me for a loop. That's okay. All right, court to discuss and consider data backup. All right, court, to discuss and consider data backup agreement with BizProtect. So, you know, we were going to do data backup and manage IT with Visual Edge. I got a call on October 28th that said that they can't do CGIS, so they're backing out, which put us in a bind because our contract ended October, was supposed to end October 31st with CTSI. After, you know, I sent them an email asking them for December 31st, they said, no, let's make it October 31st. So the 28th of October, I get a call from Visual Edge that says they're not going to be able to do what they said they were going to do, but they do have another company that can. I researched this company, BizProtect. They do backup for six other counties, Eastland, Lano, several others. And I've reached out to those counties and they are pleased with BizProtect. They also do some other areas that manage IT with, I think, 100 other counties. And they have some other areas that they do that are directly in contact with counties. So being such a short timeframe and needing to get something, I did talk to CTSI. They did agree to extend to the end of November 31st. They will not go past December 31st at this point. So this would be a one-year contract and it'd be, I didn't put the amount, 42,000 for that contract for the year. And it would do everything. The scope of work is on the back of the first page. Server backup backup, 12 terabytes, desktop PC remote monitoring and management, server remote monitoring and management, preventative maintenance. They came and talked with Jeremy and I. Jeremy showed them what we have and they feel like they can do the job. 12 terabytes of data.
That's enough space for now.
I'm sorry?
That's enough space for now, give it a couple of years.
Sure, yeah. And he said he tripled it. So, you know, we are at three something terabytes and they, he tripled it just to make sure that there's enough.
In my college class, they told me we'd never get past 612 terabytes.
Just barely over that.
A little bit, yeah, yeah.
And of course, once we get, move to the cloud in July, most of these 12 servers we won't need. So that cost will go down.
That's about it. These technology companies are back to my house now. What do you do, right?
All right, we're now going to do the managed IT right now. I want to wait, look at options on that and come back to you later with managed IT. This would be just for the data backup today.
What would be their process, satellite office that would take care of this in that case?
Most of it is going to be remote assistance. And then he personally is in Glen Rose. They're a little bit distant from us, but they don't have us. Close to us.
Well, doesn't look like they have a lot of choice. I make a motion that we use data backup agreement with BizProtect.
Second. All in favor? I hope they do. I've only heard good things and that some county judges that I truly trust. Given good recommendations. Court to discuss and consider replacing carpet for a large reading room with a library. So they have, we discussed this during budget meetings. Any idea was to stretch it, but when we went over and looked at it, it's not stretchable. It's glued down. Olivia has some excess funds in her budget. And I'll let you kind of explain what your thought process is during that time period.
We had Jake and Troy come down and do measurements and everything and went and got estimates. I'm not sure if everybody got a copy of it. And I do have the amount and budget to get it covered. We went with carpet squares is what he thinks is the best right now. It's a good quality and in order to go ahead with that, it'll take about three to four weeks to get it in, which it would need a week for the library to be closed to get it done. Depending on, if we get it approved and ordered now, we're looking at probably the week before we close for Christmas in December. We could try and get that in. If not, possibly go ahead and get it ordered and then put in around the first week of January. If you've been in there and seen the carpet, we've got wrinkles, just, it's just, it's more and more. And my, my thing is we have a lot of elderly that go through that area and I would hate for somebody to fall, trip over it because it's that wrinkled. And especially when we had voting, we had about 300 to 400 people in there. It was a bit nerve wracking.
So you'd have to pull everything out of there?
Everything would have to come out. The walls, to the genealogy room would have to come out because that's also, the carpets underneath there as well. And so my thought was seeing if the orange crew could come and help us move stuff, maybe some of the parks department guys. We could utilize people within to help us get everything out. And then a few days before that and then to get everything out. And then them come fix everything and then do more days, everything go back in.
You were talking about painting.
Yes. We have an estimate on the walls painted because that's also, I don't know when the last time that was done and you could see water chains and just whatnot on there. And so if we're going to be closed, we might as well take advantage of that time and get some other stuff done as well.
And I hadn't had an opportunity to talk to Cy, but we might be able to use the orange crew for that as well.
That'd be great.
They painted the youth center.
What's the warranty on these carpet squares?
I did not, that's a good question. I will give a corner.
Are they replaceable?
Yes.
In five traffic areas? And so you get extras since they probably won't make it in five years?
He says that they're, I've seen them, they're pretty big, so. And we're hoping, we're going to hope a little darker.
Did you consider tile at all?
We did not, I'm not sure.
Do you have people up here down on the floor and read?
We put our children, sometimes when we have big events, we put our children in there.
This seems like it would be a lot longer period of time before you'd have to change it out and not move all that again. It's throw rugs, the set on. Just a thought. I didn't know if that was something you'd even consider price wise. It may be a lot more expensive to do.
I can ask him. I know they do other, other things than.
I mean, you've got a reason that you wanted to go carpet running.
Because carpet, because we already have carpet.
Yeah.
And they would take it out and themselves and just replace it. They know a lot more. I don't know anything when it comes to replacing any of that.
Is this the only bid you got for a estimate?
This is from in town. I did call a place in Love Oak and they did not offer that. I am open to anybody else that you can give me the direction to, to contact residents.
Well, the only reason you wouldn't use someone that's in town is if they're 10% more. That's what we've always agreed on is that if it's 10% more here, we can use the, our guys, our people. But if it's more than 10%, well, we certainly, you know, maybe a lot more than 10% depending on. So it would be good just to check other places to see.
I would like to see other places.
Like Yates. Have you considered Yates?
Who are they?
They're lovely. And there's also Home Depot loads, lots of different places. I'd also like for you to consider tile. It's, it can last you forever. If you get the right color, it can, it can be there for, you don't have to move books and shelves and all that stuff again. And it doesn't wear out, it doesn't get wrinkles out. But the cost may be exorbitant. But it's not, I mean, as long as you got county people to help you get all that stuff out of there, then the cost isn't that great for labor, except the labor on tiles, I would think. Anyway, if you check into it, that would be interesting to know.
All right, I will definitely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
And the warranty on the carpet.
All right, court, to consider approval of treasurer's, and we're just, no action on that right now. Court, to consider approval of treasurer's monthly report for October 22nd. Do you have any questions?
Y'all just did a great job.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it.
If you have questions, sure, it's always okay.
We know. Interest in commerce.
It's coming in this, the Fed's raised the rates again, so we'll continue to see a hike in that. We started getting.
And I consider a motion on that.
Does that make a motion that we approve, lots of treasures for as well as the per hand?
Start it there.
Start it. All in favor? Court, to consider approval of line item transfers and budget amendments.
There's only one budget amendment, so I'm going to do it first. It is to, it's for the ARPA. It's, we had the $5,000 administrative fee for the, you know, when our, RFPs or RFPs or whatever it was. And this is just putting that into that line.
Okay.
All right, the rest of these are non-transfers. So it's the VA Office Law Books, 2,000, out of equipment, 1,000 to 5,000. Health unit, operating supplies, 3,000 and contract labor, 600. Out of education and training and medical fees, they recover operating supplies and contract labor for the remaining of the budget year. Boys and girls club, maintenance, repairs, 9,582 baby. Out of lease rentals, other equipment under 1,000 programs, program and operating supplies and run supplies. And this is to cover that guardian door system that was installed. This is precinct two, road and bridge, maintenance repaired, 25,000. Building ground maintenance, 15,000 and safety and training, 5,000. Out of road material and construction, part-time and machine hire improvements to precinct two barn, necessary maintenance to equipment and safety equipment. Precinct three, fuel and oil, 20,000, operating supplies, 2,500. Out of maintenance repaired and machine hire, get to the end of the year.
Oh, those are slow.
Precinct four, tubes, 2,500 and out of road material and construction, 2,500 balance line. Golf course, tires and tubes, 5205 out of utilities, adjusting incoming expense and balance the line. Golf course, fuel, oil and grease, $442.83 out of utilities, adjust incoming expense and balance account. And EMS professional services, 20,000, out of education and travel. And this is to maybe cover the expense lines for the EMS funded account for patients receipts and the professional services, which is the company who does all the billing and gets us the money for all that stuff. accounts payable is 693,000, 20384 plus 22,497.05 for the city bank bill.
Motion to play the bills.
Second. All in favor? I want to thank the members of the golf course that came out. And they put a lot of work into the, the changes and I appreciate y'all assisting on that. It's really good. I appreciate y'all being here today. Barbara, thank you.
I was going to say, if I can, I don't know when you're supposed to speak and I apologize, but I just wanted you to know, you were talking about the youth center and Heather James. I'd never met her before, but she worked the Christmas open house and worked ice skating rink. And I just want you to know that it was absolutely, and Kirsten can attest to this, they were absolutely outstanding. And I just, they worked their tails off all day long. So I just want you to know, you got a good one.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank, I was going to go live there again for Miss Wagner, just to, and maybe something y'all can think about as commissioners is just, you know, I know you can maybe get it 10% Yates, but, and I don't even know Yates, but I'm just saying for her to do it locally, Yates is not investing in our little league, Yates is not members at your golf course. Yates is not, those are things, if it's in our budget and it's in our thing to, you know, I appreciate that. And to keeping it here, it means something.
Thank you. All right, motion for a court adjourned? All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.